And if you would join me in the pledge, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome. And Tori, would you mind leading us in a moment of mindfulness?
Sure, yes. So at our board meetings, we have committed to taking about a minute or two to sort of settle in, arrive, and to honor our students who are also practicing mindfulness K-12. Because we have figured out that a relaxed, calm mind brings us some space, alright? So everybody can just sit up and take a deep breath in. We're gonna use the anchor words breathing in, breathing out, and just notice your thoughts and just keep thinking, just land inside your body, feeling what you're experiencing, alright? Take a deep breath in. And breathing out. In with the breath. And out. And as you find a regular breathing pattern, you can just use the words breathing in, breathing out, keeping your thoughts right with your breath. And if you notice your thoughts wandering away, just bring it right back to your breathing. And on your next exhale, you can bring yourself back into the room.
Thank you. Do that several times a work, a week at work. It's centered. Okay, so tonight, we will start with our focus on learning.
Adjustment, do you want to do adjustments?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Adjustments to the agenda. I would like to request, if we could, moving item 6A with Mr. Sherwood Smith here from the Partnership, to move him up in the agenda so that, to right after the focus on learning, so we can get him in and not have to wait all night.
Good.
Appreciate that. Absolutely.
Any other adjustments? Okay. Turn it over for an intro.
Okay, so our focus on learning is some highlights from our summer learning opportunities. And while Courtney Bryan, one of our wonderful kindergarten teachers, is gonna kick us off, I just wanted to add a few things to give the board some context to this, which is, what we know from research is developing assets, developing engaged learners is very, very important part of our proactive and preventative work. And summer opportunities are a huge piece of that. As you'll see from some of these presentations, it's an opportunity for kids to try some different opportunities, to search for their passions and their interests. Sometimes finding out they really like something, sometimes crossing it off the list, but it's all part of the process. Also, it addresses in many ways that summer learning law that you know about. And getting, keeping kids engaged in the summer in some of the particularly literacy and math skills. And then lastly, transitions. As you'll see, some of these programs are really important for some new students that are coming to us, whether they're kindergartners or whether they're new Americans who have just arrived in Winuski. Those transitions are very important to make the place comfortable and help students to be ready to enter learning. And all of those pieces really contribute towards more instructional time, a higher percentage of readiness to learn, which is what we're really shooting for. So Courtney is gonna lead us off with the new kindergarten orientation.
Thanks. I'm Courtney Bryan, I'm a kindergarten teacher at JFK. And this summer, we started a new program called Kindergarten Summer Orientation, which was open to all of our new coming kindergartners who had registered in the spring. They had one week where they came in, and the four kindergarten teachers, we were all there in one room, and we really had a chance to get kids to understand what learning is and what kindergarten is. Each day, we had between 27 and 35 kids in with us for some, called it a lot of summer fun. We read some great books. We taught a lot of routines. So that when our kids came in in the fall, we've all noticed that there's a much easier transition into the school year. They know faces of other kids in their room. They know how to make a line. We went on field trips to all the important places, like the nurse's office or the cafeteria. And so they're a lot more comfortable this year than we've noticed in the past. Each kid made a lot of friends. When I was asking kids, "How did you like kindergarten orientation?" They said, "I made my friends, I know my teachers." And we had a lot of fun. Some of you may have seen our pool in the kindergarten room. We set up a water station and a sand station to get kids having some sensory time. We did a lot of arts and crafts. We taught a lot of social thinking at recess. And it was a great success. We're really looking forward to keeping it going and watching all of our kindergartners come over the summer.
Yay, that's awesome.
So we taught a JFK ELL newcomer summer school program.
This came at the back-
Can you just introduce yourselves first?
Oh, sorry.
I'm a devotee. I did the pep presentation last spring with my colleague.
I'm Kristen Van Fossen, ELL in elementary school with Nancy. And pep, too.
The newcomer school came at the backside of the JFK summer school. So they had had, the kids had had three weeks, I believe, three weeks of JFK summer school, and then we picked them up for our fourth week.
We had two teachers, two of our liaisons, and 15 students who'd been in the US for less than one year.
And that's a critical piece. They had to have been here for less than one full academic year.
No, don't mind if I interrupt for a second.
No.
Fifteen, how many? What percentage of the ELL students that are under a year attended?
All of them.
Do we have any field for that?
All of them.
So those were, that was our population that's been here under a year was the fifteen?
Well, we didn't have, we don't have, we don't take kindergarten going into first grade.
Okay.
We take first graders going into second, and then fifth graders going into sixth grade.
Okay. Just to give it a rundown.
Any other?
Our objectives were, are to expose students to local resources and community activities, learn English while engaged in their community. So we go to, we go on lots of field trips so that they have the opportunity to meet lots of people and talk to them. We wanna empower students to take ownership of the community by considering the environment, which was our focus this year. They're building background knowledge and solid relationships with other students and with us. And to make school a positive experience for our newcomers.
One of our trips, we took a field trip every day. One of our trips was to Shelburne Farms, which we had a connection, so we didn't have to pay for it. So that was great. And the kids got to do things that they haven't done before, although some did milk cows back in their native countries. But it was a great time.
The outcomes were that students were able to practice listening and speaking outside of the classroom context. They were able to experience opportunities they otherwise would not have, like going to Shelburne Farms or all of the other places we visited. Students learned about American cultural norms in different contexts, like what do we do when we're in line? Or what do we do when we're on the boat? Students developed an awareness of the need to protect their environment. And students drew real world connections to the book Miss Rumpfius by Barbara Clooney, which we sort of used as our backbone for making the world a better place.
Another field trip was to Sugar Bush, where children had an opportunity to go bungee jumping, zip lining. They got to experience going to a mountain. And they were just building lots of background knowledge that they'll access when they read about a mountain.
And it's super fun.
And it didn't cost anything because we have connections. Well, that was great. Another field trip was the ferry ride. Again, probably 95% of our kids have never been on a boat before. So again, just building background knowledge that they can connect to literacy or other academic areas at a later time. It was a beautiful day. And that was our trip there.
Some of the standards that we focused on were the, overall, because we have so many grade levels, we have to look at the, sort of the strands running through the grades. But we were, we're focusing on listening and speaking, engaging in collaborative discussions, and making self-to-text connections.
It wasn't all field trips. They did have a writing piece each day. We try and have them write in a journal and reflect on what they experienced or learned. We didn't have much time because of the field trips, but that certainly was a piece of it.
And that's it? There we are.
Any questions? And the kids, I've been doing this for quite a few years, and they just go back and talk about it year after year. They don't forget these field trips or experiences. And it's very positive. And it's just all about building background knowledge.
Is it challenging to manage so many different ages in one room?
Well, we have two teachers and two liaisons. So, you know, 15 kids is very manageable.
And because they're all newcomers, they're all sort of at the same, well, sometimes sort of close to the same level in reading and language. So we can kind of work with it that way.
Any other questions?
J.C., are you next?
Alright.
Okay, let me introduce J.C. now, who did another take on the same kind of program. This is focus on the middle school, right, J.C.?
Elementary school. So I'm a fifth grade teacher at JFK, and I brought Brayden along to talk a little bit about his experience, although I think he just realized we didn't have as much fun as the ELL kids. We'll put up a little next year. So this was the three-week session before the ELL group. And it was three wonderful weeks. There were 25 teachers that were teaching during that time, kindergarten through fifth grade. There were 85 students, averaging 85 stu-, or 80 students that came to summer school. And the kindergarten program was a different newcomer program, getting the kindergartners ready for school. But first grade through fifth grade took on the PBL project, the Project Based Learning. And we had done the training on PBL the three days after school got out. So this was a wonderful time for us to just try it out, smaller groups of kids. And we worked with our colleagues. So it was, like, for me, it was all three of my teammates, myself and my other two teammates. So we got to do it together and work through the kinks together, which was great. And I know talking to the other teachers, they also felt it was really nice to work through it and do a trial run with that extra support. So the summer, the big summer school theme was, "Why is Winuski a great place to live?" And each grade level took on a smaller question. I'm not sure if you've seen yet on the website, but there's a third grade put a link on great places to go in Winuski, and it's right on the website. And that's something that they created in that summer school as their final project. So the PBL question for us was-
For us, it was history in Winuski.
Why is history, the history of Winuski so important?
Because we wanted to learn more about, we wanted to learn more about where we are right now and what we're doing, and how this school came to be, how was street names become street names, how, when we're like the firehouse built, the police station. We did all a bunch of other stuff, like when did the bridge fall down? That, like, before the bridge that was here now. And we did, we took a little field trip on the last day, the day before the last day of summer school. And we, and we went around both of Winuski. And we went down to the river. And we saw, like, the concrete where the bridge and the dam was. And we saw, we saw, like, things that looked like dumbbells in the water. And it was, but they were really, like, stuff to keep the bridge and the dam there. And we found, well, in my group, we found out, like, how old the firehouse was. It's 39 years old. And we figured out, um-
It seems really old, doesn't it?
Yeah. And we figured out when the school was built, like, just the elementary, or no, just the middle and high school side. And then there, and then we figured out when the elementary side was built. It, um, and we also looked at, like, the old elementary school before JFK Elementary School was here. And, um, while we were walking, we were all looking at this stuff because all of us had something different. And people were so interested in what their topic was. And we, we just had fun doing it on the field trip because we were with our friends, we were learning. And we were learning with our teachers that we were gonna learn, well, not for me, I'm in sixth grade. But we were learning, I was learning with my old teachers, not my new teachers.
Previous, not old.
Previous. Previous.
Brayden, can I ask you, because I think you're kind of talking about it, but how is the learning that you did during these weeks different than the way your learning normally is?
The learning that I did during these weeks, the two weeks, because I wasn't there for the first week, those two weeks were, the learning was different because we were learning, like, a specific thing. And we weren't, like, just having to go all, like, we weren't just having to go onto one specific thing and then just, like, have the whole class learn about it.
So you weren't going, like, learning about math, then learning about science the next hour, and then learning, doing writing the next hour? It was kind of all together, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it was kind of all together. Like, it was interesting seeing the posters and the, like, what they did for their writing on the iPads. And we, it was just fun because we were there with our friends. We were learning, like, we were seeing what their minds thought. And we were there learning about Winuski, which is really fun to do.
So the way it was set up was, there was, there are big questions about what makes the history of Winuski so important to us. And then we said to the kids, "Okay, if you want to find out, what are questions that you have that you would like to find the answers to?" So we had charts of questions. And they broke, from those questions, they broke into groups and said-
There was about seven pages, just-
Yeah, lots of questions.
And as soon as we found the answer to them, we would just have to put a little check right next to it.
And then they broke into groups of, "I want to learn about the Great Flood and how that formed Winuski." "I want to learn about the historical buildings and how that formed Winuski." What did you do, Brayden?
I did historical buildings.
Historical buildings. And so there were-
There was also the bridge-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the waterfall.
And Ethan Allen.
Ethan Allen.
Both looked at Ethan Allen, yeah. And then it, so they, we were pretty much the facilitators. And they chose, you know, what they wanted to focus on. And they, we brought the iPads in, we introduced those. And it was nice to have fifth graders in there. Probably half of the group were fifth graders, and the other half were incoming fifth graders. So they trained the incoming fifth graders how to use the iPads, which is wonderful.
But we also did that during the year.
Yeah. And then they had a final presentation where they had to present what they learned. And Brayden knew was really great on the iPad, so he taught a lot of the kids, he and a bunch of the other outgoing fifth graders.
I had very little time to work, and I had very, a lot of time to work on the iPad with all the other kids. Every two minutes, you had a kid walking up to me, "How do you do this?" And then you just have me, oh, this was, it was, it was fun, though. It was fun. It was fun in summer school.
Any questions about the-
Just one related to historic buildings. Did you find out what happened to the old firehouse?
No. Oh, good question.
Burned down, burned down.
Oh, so it was amazing to walk through the, I mean-
It's like a bad joke.
Day and we, it is a bad joke, isn't it? We, it was amazing because we were stopping and just appreciating these buildings so different than we ever had before. You know, looking at the old, what was it, the hose? What did they call it, across from the police station? That's the church now, the green church. It was the what, the hose company or something? There was one, it was just amazing to-
There was a furniture company.
It was the furniture company that burned down.
It was something else.
And so it was really, yeah, that was really neat. And that's what Brayden was talking about. We spent so much time at the river, seeing all the, the trap, all the pins and-
And we took a little break in between to get, like, water.
It was hot that day.
Yeah.
So the project-based learning is in an effort to get the students ready for a different type of learning.
Right.
Can you take two minutes just to-
Sure. Yeah.
Just what it is.
It was typed out for me. Because we're still learning how it works. But, so it's, so we're given an essential question, and we're pulling it right from the curriculum. So if, so this, the one that we're going to do in fifth grade this year is the Revolutionary War. So we're talking about how people's perspectives changed, or how people's perspectives shaped other people in the Revolutionary War. So we're pulling in something from every, lots of things, from all the common course. So that's pulling in a lot of language, a lot of literacy, a lot of literacy, a lot of writing skills. And that's when they're working in their groups, we're having them journal. We're having them read, and we're giving them skills on how do you read this article? How do you read this perspective? And pulling in math. We definitely pulled in math as we were looking at years and, you know, how long it took, things were around. And we were, with the river, they measured the river. So they measured how long the river was, and they were trying to put that into perspective. So it's pulling all the curriculum into one area, one concentrated question. But then it's the kids guiding that. And we're facilitating and keeping them focused, but it's the kids guiding their own learning, which, how did that go for you, Brayden?
It was, it was fun because they're, um, how can I put this in the words? I'm thinking of so many words in my mind that I could say, that just don't really come out of my mouth. I'm just gonna say it was great. It was great, it was great. I have no words that are popping in my head right now. It was great.
It's a good word.
And so with the outcomes, like the presentation, so they have put, like, what they need to sort of demonstrate around that?
Yes, so they had a rubric, and they knew what they had to present.
Yeah.
And being our first time around, we were a little more relaxed. And afterwards, we talked about, you know, we'll certainly in the school year be more specific on what we're looking for in a presentation. And that pulls in a lot of, a couple of the grade level, our graduate expectations. We found those will be easy to pull in. But they presented lots of different ways. And they got to choose. Did they want to present through a poster? Did they want to present through an iPad? Did they want to present? Some of them actually made the model of the river and walked the class through the river, Jericho and IBM and, you know, the different parts along the river, the different main points. So that was the ownership piece that I think really bought, the kids bought into.
Who goes?
What?
Who participates?
For summer school?
Hmm.
Anybody. Any of the K through five is all invited. And I, and the middle school then. But, so we have incoming kindergartners through-
Incoming first grade.
Incoming first grade, I'm sorry.
Through sixth grade.
Through, thank you.
Incoming sixth grade.
Through sixth grade, yeah. Yep, it's open, anybody. And we had some kids that would come for a week, and some kids that would come for all three weeks. And, you know, it was a very, you know, whatever worked for their schedule.
Eighty-five is a good number.
Yeah.
A big number, 100%.
Yeah.
Total.
Big class, not enough chairs.
Yeah, it was, for us, it was a big group. Usually the older kids, we don't have as big of a group, but it was a good group for us this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Grass, and I'm here to talk about, I'm the 21C Program Director, and I have Madison Wright with me. We're gonna move over this way so we can talk to you about the middle school summer program. The middle school summer program, it was the first year that, well, we've tried to do some middle school summer programs in the past, but this is the first year that we really did a middle school summer program. And we were fortunate enough to be invited to play with the Sarah Holbrook Center in Burlington after school to participate. And they had the infrastructure, which was critical for us. Because Kathy Alwell at the Sarah Holbrook Center has been doing this summer program for about 20 years. And so we needed to find some money, and we did. And then we could send, we could send our kids. And my big focus for the summer was, I was really distressed during the year to find out on our youth risk behavior survey that 67% of our middle schoolers didn't think they mattered in our community. And for me, that was huge. So people around here got sick and tired of me saying that all the time, like, "We gotta do something, we gotta do something." And I think what, I think what the kids that participated would say to you is that they found that they mattered. Because we took them from here over to Edmunds Middle School and to places all over Vermont, actually.
Oops.
On the sidebar.
Yeah. I'm doing something, but it's-
Point at the computer.
Oh, yeah, that'll do it. What am I doing around here? Okay, it's not me. It's not me.
It's not you.
It's like, oh, you, okay. But I have really good pictures.
Bottom right.
How many middle schoolers were able to participate?
So we had, we originally had 29 that signed up. We lost three for whatever reason. So we had 26 kids that participated in 74 slots, program slots. So kids came for more, for more than one program. And Madison, why don't you share with them which programs you participated in?
So I participated in four. And they are, the first one, the first week I did was bombing. The second week was fashion design. The third week was running yoga and dance. And the fourth week was cooking and community.
And I have to say, this is the outfit that she designed and sewed in a week. So I asked her to wear it tonight. She said, "Come up forward so people can see you." So essentially, what we did was the program ran for six weeks. And so kids could sign up for half-day programs or full-day programs. And if we can get the slide up, I've got a whole list of the different programs that the kids signed up for. And we essentially, we had one student who went for five weeks every morning to do pre-algebra. And she, she was with outgoing eighth grader. She was an incoming eighth grader. She scored the highest. And so she was very excited in terms of the five weeks with the, with the pre-algebra. So we have her looking at some more challenging math this year as a result of her participating in that program. The other, the other thing that I should add is, kids had to be here at 8 o'clock in the morning. And yes, some moms, yes, Jen, you know that from slam poetry. And they came. I mean, they were here. They had to be here at 8 for when the van came to pick them up. Then the van was back. If you had a half- If you had a half-day program, the van was back anywhere from twelve to twelve-thirty. It just depended on the day and the traffic. And then if you had an afternoon program, you'd meet, you'd have to be here by twelve-fifteen, twelve-thirty, and you'd get back at four or four-thirty. So some examples, because I'm not sure we're gonna get the slide, and I wanna be careful about time. We had kids doing rock climbing, sailing, um, Explore Vermont. We had a group of kids, I happened to be on a legislative study committee around after school. I had a meeting in Montpelier, that's when they were going to Montpelier. So they came to the State House and saw our meeting. So that was, and for the seven kids, three out of the seven had never been to Montpelier before. And these were middle schoolers, so very exciting. Um, I'm trying to think, bait fishing, um, the math course, manga book and drawing. We had two middle school teachers from here who taught, um, Steve Forman taught a zillion things. He taught two weeks of Lego robotics. And now he's doing a Lego robotics here and we're gonna have a competition with Hunt Middle School later on in the winter. And he taught a week of bike touring. So he took, he and another, um, teacher took kids biking all morning, all over the city. And then, um, in the afternoons, they did bike repair. So, um, and then Chris Magistrani taught a week of manga book club and drawing. And so it was really great. Our kids got to meet Edmund's and Hunt Middle School kids, they got to meet us. And they got to, the first day, everybody went to Edmund's Middle School, they thought, whoa, that is big. And by the time we were done, Madison was showing me everything in the school and how to find my way around because I was still getting lost. So, um, I think we're not gonna see the slides, but that's okay. Um, at, at some point, maybe, um, Sean, you could share them with the board because it has the more lengthy list. I don't remember all twenty-four. Oh. I don't remember all twenty-four, um, programs that they were in. Um, so we're hoping, we're hoping to continue this in the future. And, um, what, what was your favorite? Which was your favorite program?
Um, it was fashion design because I got my brain going and thinking of new creative ideas. And I just like put them all together and made this outfit.
Fabulous.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well done.
So, thank you. I don't know if you have any questions or- Okay. All right. Great job, Madison. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So Bill just cruised through my two slides.
Uh, I don't-
He doesn't have one.
I don't have a full name, I just have mine.
Oh, yeah, I don't have one. All right.
Laura, that was a nice effort. I'm sorry, this technology always fails when we need it. Uh, my name is Bill Clark, I'm a high school ELL teacher. I also teach English and history. And for the past four years, I've, I've taught at the Summer Transitions Program. Um, Hassan Ko is here today, thank you, and Rosie R., as well as Tom Payer, who taught math, uh, this summer with us. We had other staff members. Tabitha Solis was an aide. Karen Green helped out in math. And Whitney Doobie helped me in the English, uh, in the English group. Uh, we had some learning objectives. We really were concentrating on math and English. Um, this is our focus, it's been our focus for several years. We wanna talk about new skills and strategies. We also wanna reinforce the old skills and strategies that students have learned over the years. Uh, and then we also really emphasize the social development part of it. So we go out on field trips and we create some awareness in the community. Uh, so we, we have a game, uh, it's kind of a middle school, high school model. We have a mixed group. So we have morning meeting, uh, we go on field trips. And in the afternoon, the students watch movies. And the reason why they watch the movies is so they have writing opportunities. They also learn some social things that they may have missed. One of the best things, I think, that students can tell you this, is that we watched The Wizard of Oz, which they had never seen. And all of a sudden, they were, I'm off to see The Wizard as part of their daily kind of conversation. Uh, we went five weeks this year, we had twenty-seven students. Uh, the town, thank you very much, provided breakfast and lunch, which was another hook to, to bring them in. Um, both Tom and I had weekly assessments in the English group. We, uh, they assembled a portfolio. Uh, we did have a bunch of newcomers, so that they were very, very new. They had some difficulty with the English language. We tried to incorporate them into our program. Soccer is a great leveler, we found out. And then, um, both Hassan and Rosie are at more or less grade level and so we can encourage them in their, uh, their current work. Uh, we try to personalize the instruction so that we have enough staff that they can create, that we can, they can see who we're working with. We differentiate quite a bit across the board, both with the, the students who have more proficiency as well as those who don't. And we individualize the instruction because we have adults who can work with a, a particular need or a particular topic. Um, socially, we went to a Lake Monsters game. Most of these students don't know anything about baseball, the American sports. So as part of, becoming part of America, they, they learned about it. We, we play patriotic songs and we go through that so that they're learning all about what makes up an American. Uh, we visited the library so that they, when they do have research to do, they can find it on their own. They all get library cards. We went on a Lake Champlain cruise. And then at the end, we had a potluck dinner. Uh, math, uh, Tom really emphasized game-oriented math. And so they played cribbage and chess and Tom did some interesting work with economics. Uh, we couldn't get them to stop. They would play cribbage and chess at recess and after school, they just really got into it. And again, they're adding, they're subtracting, they're, they're really working with, with math in all different ways. Uh, you can't really see the slide too well, but Tom did a, a stock market thing for economics. So they're, they're really talking about higher-level math in some ways. But, uh, they also worked quite a bit regularly together. Uh, this group is building bridges out of popsicle sticks. So there's some stresses and there's some angles that they're talking about. Uh, this group is presenting, uh, a, a math problem as a group. They had to develop it themselves, they had to work together in order to do that. Um, as I said, uh, they developed a currency in economics, they built bridges. And then they did this wonderful exercise about coordinate plane theory. We gave them some numbers and they created a drawing from that. One was a dragon and the other was a horse and all from numbers. Um, in the English group, uh, we read Sudoku and a Thousand Paper Cranes. They assembled a portfolio. They did a lot of writing about their own life experiences. And sometimes I would just throw them a curve and say, "Tell me about your little toe." And they would have to write about that. So they're, they're being challenged to explore in writing. And they also did some poetry. We were fortunate, uh, we had technology so they could write on computers. And then they would print it out for me and then I would review it, either myself or Whitney or Karen or somebody. And then they would present that to themselves and then they would create a final draft of that. And then they also had to recite The Road Less Traveled. And so everybody in this class memorized the poem. Uh, they did it individually at first. And then they got up as a group, some of them did choral reading of it. Um, socially, uh, we just had a great time. We, we took time for the field trips. As I said, uh, morning meeting, we involved them in some, uh, thought-provoking games of how to work together, how to do some math, uh, thinking. Uh, they loved to play soccer. And, and the cruise just happened to be on the day after Eid, the Islamic holiday. So everybody arrived dressed up. And so it was like an extended, extended celebration. Uh, I can report back to you that you will be very proud of our students. They behaved well in public, they, they treated each other and as well as anybody they met with a lot of respect. And I just was busting by the time I came back. And then socially, again, uh, they produced this potluck dinner. So all of the students made the food. And, uh, General Michael Doobie came. Uh, General Doobie is the Deputy Director of the Northern Command. He loves our students, this is the second year he's come to visit us. Uh, Whitney Doobie is his daughter. Uh, he also, um, talked about his world travel, so he really identified with the diversity of our, of our students. They, we had a great day, everybody was just very excited about cooking together. Even the boys cooked, which was very, very surprising. Uh, General Doobie brought, brought his, uh, his wife and his father-in-law. Uh, some of the administrators came and they had lunch with us. Uh, it was kind of the end of the year, end of the summer celebration. And followed by the Grand Master Chess Championship. So we had to name a Grand Master. As I said, they got very, very involved in chess. Uh, they couldn't stop playing it and so we had to have a, a champion.
Who won?
Who won, Rosie R.? I don't remember.
I think Karababi or-
Really?
Karababi won.
Okay, Karababi won, or, no, who won?
Karababi.
Oh, okay, Karababi won, okay. One of our fifth graders who was going into middle school. So, uh, we had a very diverse group in many, many different ways. Uh, all of our students loved to play soccer. In fact, some of the young ladies you see here are out in the backfield right now in, in that game. Uh, but they would play all day long and we would do it at recess and that was hardly enough. At the end of the summer, we presented awards. Everybody got an award for some kind of contribution that they made. And then Rosie R. loved Sudoku and the paper cranes. So here she is working on her thousand paper cranes. I don't know how many you got up to, but I have them hanging in my classroom upstairs. And, uh, this is the, the group photo, this was taken, uh, down at Echo. Uh, it was a beautiful day, they enjoyed themselves and it was just nice to have, you know, such a great class picture. And this day and so many other times over the summer, I heard a major, major thank you from the students, and I wanna relay that to you folks. Because Title III funds provided most of the money, but you gave us the space. You gave us the ability to work with these students. This is a very important part of their program. Our research indicates that if without a summer program, a student comes in the fall one month behind, especially our low-income students. So we've alleviated, at least for this year, that problem. My students came back this year, they are on target, they are on task, very, very involved and interested in our work. So, thank you and, and thank you for my students and teachers who've come today also. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good, send a great big thank you to you. It's amazing, the summer opportunities that are being provided to all of our students. And the fun and the games, you know, making learning fun and social awareness and all that.
Very much so, thank you.
Yes, wonderful.
I'd like to turn the thank you around to the staff that comes during the summer too. You guys are, that's, that's a wonderful thing that you do for our students, so thank you. Does the stuff that you do in the summer change the way that you teach during the regular school year?
Very much so. And I think Rosie R. is in my ELL four class right now. And I, Tom, I don't, I think you probably adjust your, your curriculum. We teach the same curriculum in the summer as we do during the year. But if Rosie R. has been in the summer, I can say, "Well, four-way thinking," and she knows what to do. I don't have to reteach that. So our curriculum doesn't change, it's just supplemented. Tom, would you like to add anything? Because I, I kind of blew by all of my good math stuff.
That was, that was great, yeah. At the high school level, it's, at least for the math, I wanna introduce math to them that they haven't seen before and engage their interest. So we went into the math each week with the general idea of like, okay, so I'm gonna tell you guys about economics and I hope you don't fall asleep. And I do it. But, um, they grabbed onto those. You know, sometimes they grab on, sometimes we have to adjust both the economics and also the bridge building in particular. Um, there was just a fire in them to know more. So, uh, you know, these guys can tell you everything they know about GDP, currency versus fiat money, um, how the stock market works and how you determine the strength of a currency as compared to another. I mean, they just went to that next level with it. It was exciting.
I was taking an economics course at UVM this summer, they know much more than I do.
I was like, "Can I take that class?"
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure, thank you for inviting me.
Sounds like a sweep. Well, thank you all again, greatly appreciated. Take your time out this evening to help us, uh, understand what goes on in the summers. Um, so I'd like to take two minutes as we have a new student member. Yes. And Sean, if you could intro, Ladania is back, welcome back. Yeah.
Hey, Ladania.
So her partner is Rainbow Chen, who is also a junior.
Rainbow.
Sophomore, sorry. And so hopefully many years between the two of them, uh, representing the student voice and opinion, uh, on the, on the school board. And we're really happy to have, uh, Rainbow. And we've done, uh, we've had a one, uh, pre-meeting so far where we went over the agenda and we talked about, uh, general decorum in a board meeting and, uh, what the board would be looking for from them in terms of contributions, uh, uh, from the student perspective, whether it be policy or whatever the topic might be. So feel free to turn to your student reps and ask them for input at any time, uh, when you feel it's appropriate.
Welcome, thank you.
Just a couple of words for me, don't be bashful about bringing forward items that you believe that need to be heard. Please, bring them forward, we'll, we'll work with them.
Feel free to sit on that part.
Great. That's what we want. Nothing, nothing short of everything, right? All right. So, um, now, we'll take now six A and we'll move up. Um, Sherwood Smith coming from the Partnership for Change, uh, is a co-chair this, uh, started this past spring, early summer?
Spring, so it won't be a full year till, wow, January.
All right.
So it's an honor and a pleasure to be here. I've met some of you, I just wanted to give a name to, a face to the name. I live in Burlington, I have a daughter in Hunt. Um, I teach at UVM. I've been here since ninety-five, so, a little while. And it, I was really honored to be asked to co-chair with Martha. Uh, she works at United Way. And to work with Hal and this project, I think it's really a, a unique opportunity. I haven't been many places where two schools really make an effective partnership. And I've been really impressed. I really think Winuski's done an amazing job with the I Project. And I'm really impressed with the board's idea of using policy, uh, policy governance. I think that's a really exciting, exciting move that you made. I don't really have, uh, anything to say, I'm happy to take questions. I, I think you're due to switch, um, representation. So you might be thinking about who'd like to join us.
Yeah, and that's on the steering committee.
On the steering committee.
Which meets once a month.
Once, about once a month. So we're looking for somebody to sort of step up and help us in that way. That's all I really have. If you have questions or comments, either about partnership or about me, I'm happy to try to answer them. But I don't wanna take a lot of your, your time, but I just wanted to have a chance to introduce myself. Thank you for your commitment to this project and, you know, we'll be looking to get a third-year, uh, funding. And that's gonna be a big step for us, if that was possible.
What I was gonna mention is that we're in, we're in the last year of the three and a half year. Um, seen some pretty significant education and research done. Um, going after now the, um, Sustainability Grant, which is another grant, about half the dollar amount, but it is, how do you keep the changes that we are looking to make in place without significantly impacting what we have to do as a budget? It shouldn't cost us a lot of money to sustain some of the changes that we're doing. It shouldn't cost any, really. It should be part of the fabric of what we do. So, that's the piece of that next grant. I think that's three years?
Yes.
Again, right? Another three-year stint, so. Sherwood, have you been with the partnership from the beginning?
Um, no. Um, I've been involved, I've been in the Burlington School District. And I've known about the partnership since, since the discussion of applying for the Nellie May Grant.
Yeah.
But I wasn't on, on the, uh, the steering committee or directly involved.
And, and since you've been around, is there something that stands out for you in terms of what, what we've learned and, and what we've done and what we've seen?
I guess I've asked two things I've noticed. Uh, one is I think that there's a real benefit to Winuski in terms of size.
Yeah.
I think there's been some successes I've seen because of the size of the district and your ability to bring the whole community together. Um, I think that's been a bigger challenge for Burlington.
Yeah.
I think the I, the I-Lab project here has really been impressive in terms of the ability to engage students and use technology in a way that I think is, at least on the outside, has seemed very equitable.
Mm-hmm.
This whole idea of engaging all students in the community. So that's something that's really impressed me.
Great.
All right then.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm happy if, if any of you wanna contact me, please do. I'm happy to meet with you individually. Or if there's something you'd like to share with me as a board, I'm happy to come to any of your meetings.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
See you, Ken.
Thank you. All right. And then on into the, uh, consent agenda. One, I just, from a consent agenda standpoint, I just wanted to, uh, thank Sean at least for starting to align the reports with the ends. And start to break out the college readiness, the career readiness, the, the other pieces that we're looking for in our end statement. So appreciate that. Um, The only other comment I had in, in with regard to the, the consent agenda is I just wanted to pass along again. Last year was here for the beginning of the year barbecue, we offered to invite folks in to meet teachers. Uh, I walked in last year and the parking lot was plugged. We served six hundred and change dinners. Uh, this year I had a conflict and couldn't make it, but we served over a thousand dinners this year. So the parking lot not only was plugged, we had to move staff cars to allow room for people to come in, so. I, I see a lot of interest in eighty-five, uh, kids coming to a summer school program that was by invitation, not coercion. Right. Um, I think that's huge, right, I mean, that's, uh, that's a big number, so I see a lot of good things coming. With those, um, I would like to, I would accept a motion to accept consent agenda.
So will.
So will. A second?
Second?
Any other discussion? Yeah, all those in favor accepting the consent agenda, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Should save some ball blade.
Okay, yeah.
It's ama, it's amazing the amount of information that's packed into these, to your reports.
Oh, yeah.
They're fabulous.
Yeah, and I would, uh, invite anyone listening to go and look through the consent agenda that's posted with the meeting minutes to find a lot more detailed information about what is actually going on in a lot of different areas of the school.
Right, cause it's not just about, it, there's a lot about what's happening in the school, but it's also what's happening outside within the Winuski community and the connections broader to. The state as well and sort of Chittenden County also, so it's, it's really broad in scope and how it's all connected.
Definitely invite you to take a look through that. Uh, on to item four, executive limitations, the superintendent monitoring report. Uh, like to open up discussion on, discussion on that piece.
Can I tee it up a little bit with a few comments?
Love to have that being a starting point.
So as you may have noticed, a lot of this monitoring report really hinges on the external audit and ongoing financial reports, so you see a lot of the same language. That, that's why, I mean, that's why the audit is so important. And it's why it's important to have an external audit to, uh, have a powerful check and balance on, on our work. The second thing is, uh, you also notice that we're working on putting these internal controls and procedures into written format. Um, and so that's some very important work and be doing that with our new auditors and our treasurer is also gonna be a, a part of that process. So I just wanted to note that that's intentional, that, um, for both of those pieces, that, uh, almost all of our financial, um, reporting is really dependent on that external, that, that third party to confirm or, uh, you know, give us some points to work on, and so that's why it's referenced.
And the, uh, internal controls and procedures are a check and a balance internally before the external auditor gets there.
Right.
So that was the one comment that I had, uh, keep, kept coming up for me is in five and six, uh, which are allow practices to not comply with generally, generally accepted accounting procedures, uh, receive, process or disperse the organization's assets, these are the things it cannot do. Uh, under internal controls that are insufficient to prevent, detect significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And then I think, might have been seven, but it was answered in thirteen, and that is, five and six referenced putting in place, uh, working with the new auditor to develop written internal controls and procedures. Uh, but then I think it was thirteen mentioned the, uh, it wasn't thirteen, which one was it? One of them mentioned that we were able to do that by following procedures. And so there was a little bit of an inconsistency across, I wrote down seven. One of the, one of them had, um, I'm gonna have to look back through it.
So I, I think what you're saying is, um, well, I guess here, here would be my answer to what I think you're asking, is, um, because of the audits and there has not been any, um, uh, real powerful statements or management letters that say your checks and balances are not in order, your procedures are out of whack. We can say comfortably that our internal procedures, although not fully written at the moment, work. Because an external auditor for years has given us audits that has, that have not said, you need to do this, you need to do that. Is that the tree you were?
Um, partially, I think, I think what I was, when I read through it, I just, there was one in here and I, I thought I had written, I got written. Five, six, seven and thirteen. Three or four of them mentioned that we were working with the external auditor to put the procedures in place.
Right.
And one of them said we were utilizing internal procedures.
That's thirteen says utilizes appropriate internal procedures that can detect, deter, prevent fraud and is in the process of collaborating with a new auditor.
And in the process of.
To develop written.
Yeah, put them into writing.
Okay.
That's the difference between, and, and the way the policy is written, it doesn't prescribe that those need to be written, but we want them in writing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you look around, Rebecca and I have already done some research, at least regionally, um, many other boards and their policies, these are not fifty pages, five hundred pages of when X happens, you do Y, these are broader statements about financial reporting and checks and balances within, within the system. So that's what you would expect to see when these become into writing.
Okay.
I had a question on two point three, number fourteen. It says, it talks about non-resident students and tuition. And it says a statement from the business manager is attached confirming all tuition, and I don't see a statement.
Let me furnish you with that.
Okay.
So my original thinking was, uh, that because basically the, the finance manager would be confirming everything.
Right.
That I would have that for you when I brought it back the next time. And then, um, Mike indicated that to me, so I brought it to you.
So I think that brings up a pretty good point for discussion for us is this particular first pass is an acceptance of the interpretation and an acceptance of the data that supports it? Or is this just an acceptance of the interpretation that Sean's providing forward? Now remember, we're using these interpretations of the different policies as essentially the, um, performance evaluation for Sean as we go through the year. We're not doing a performance evaluation at the end of the year, we're using these as that piece. It's ongoing, and so I guess the question is, would we expect both the interpretation and the data at the time of the initial review?
Why wouldn't for this particular policy or for any other?
No, period.
Period.
In, in general, I, I think it, I think it, we can't do it for one and not for others, I think that the, the thought process has to be the same for all. Some may be easier than others.
Right.
Give it that.
I, we've had this discussion before and my thought process has been and is still, it's, it's hard for me to shoehorn being that some are more difficult or more open to interpretation than others, uh, to shoehorn us into one policy. My thought process would be if we need more discussion, then we take extra time or we go to another, you know, a second meeting or we send Sean to ask for more information. I think that totally falls under policy governance, and policy governance boards will say to their superintendent, we're not disagreeing perhaps, but we want more information.
So you want more evidence?
Yeah, maybe wanting more evidence or having questions, verification. And I think we should be free as a board to take the extra time if we need it. But at the same token, if we see something, and my thought process with this particular set of policies is we can just deal with this tonight. You know, if the board feels, if we have a consensus of us, that we feel that, hey, this is something we can just deal with right on the spot, then we should be free as a board to do that as well, so. My thought process would be leave it open to an as-needed, you know, and I think the board, I think we're with it enough where we can say, eh, you know, when we start getting into the ends, guys, it's gonna be, I, I don't see a saying, you know, one meeting, we're gonna necessarily hash that all out. But at the same token, if there's something that's boilerplate and it's something like Sean has said, I think very well in these, that, hey, we're using accounting practices, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and we can, we have good evidence. I don't think we should be chained to bringing this up in another meeting and wasting time on it when we don't need to.
So can I ask a clarifying question? So when you're saying like, deal with it tonight, is that, is that dealing with the interpretation and the evidence? You know, saying we are, we take this report as is and we agree with this?
Yeah, I think, I think with these, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in policy governance, there really should be a motion made and a second, and the board would vote and say, we accept, you know,
Accepting the report.
That we accept your report and your interpretation and we agree with it, um, from the evidence provided, blah, 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 blah. And if not, if there's some questions or whatever, then we, we have the, the freedom to.
We've had that discussion.
We've had that discussion in the past.
Okay. So I think that.
That's how I feel.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
Other thoughts?
Well, the question, wasn't there a question about whether we do just the interpretation or the interpretation and the evidence together in this report?
Right, if we're gonna accept it, we need to consider both the interpretation and the evidence in the same.
Right, so that, cause accepting the report means we're accepting both.
Right.
Okay, cause it would seem odd to not have only that the other.
I agree.
Okay.
And, and remember this month, cause you're on a two-month cycle for the monitoring report, so this month is really a discussion so that I can hear what you have to say and we can hash out any clarifications or disagreements. Then I take it back and polish it up and then you have, then you're really accepting it next month.
Okay.
Right.
And if, if the discussions have gone as they, as they did last year, for the most part, that, that starts out in consent agenda. Can always be pulled out by a majority of the board, but that's where it goes in, in month two of the cycle.
Yep.
Now, we were having a conversation at the board retreat, um, in terms of finances, you know, and I know there were some questions around, um, policy governance being two hands off around this. Do any of those questions around that tie into this monitoring report? As we see the level of detail that has gone through, um, that Sean's go through with fourteen different, um, major points and the interpretation of that and then the evidence behind that, it seemed to me as I was reading through it, it was answering a lot of the questions we had about are we using a system of governance as well as, um, accounting to ensure that we are keeping the tax dollars, um, you know, we're, we're doing well with that. And it seemed to me as I was reading it, where it was talking about, um, obviously preventing fraud and whatnot. It was also talking, I think what hit it, one of the things was the use of, um, misleading financial reporting, you know, making sure that we're using actuals versus, you know, like that, that definitely came up. So that we're, do we feel as a board that this certainly covers all the different gaps, potential gaps of managing money?
Interesting.
So on those line, exactly along that line, I've gotta ask the question, then, um, between now and next month, should we, do we need to have, or should, should we have someone do some research? Do some investigation, do some actual data mining, I did that the last time, just to, to understand what it was, it was all there.
Direct, the direct inspection.
A direct inspection, right. Cause I think we wanna, if, if we're gonna require, request a direct inspection of the data, we should do that tonight, make sure that somebody goes out and then before, in the consent agenda, the next time, we can have some of the answers if somebody did some, some of the investigation.
I was just saying, wouldn't direct investigation mean that we have a question about the evidence?
I would.
That we're a little, like, like, yeah, maybe.
Partially, but I think the due diligence is that you check, like, my son saying, I'm going to so-and-so's house. Nine times out of ten, that's okay, but one time out of ten, I'm gonna call.
Are you comparing me to your son?
No, I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that to you. It's that, it's that one, it, it's, it's, I trust you explosive, explicitly, show me the money, one time, right? But it's that one time out of ten, just wanna see and make sure, we've done it.
And so this is, this is one way of thinking about it, I guess, is that with larger boards, typically they would have a finance committee. It should be a smaller group of the board, who would meet with the, uh, probably the superintendent in some cases, depending on size, the principal, finance manager and an auditor sometimes. And they would come back to the full board and they would report out on those things. So because you're a smaller board, um, that's, that's a different process, but you certainly, so that's the way I would see. If you, if you had some questions and you wanted to, um, follow a direct inspection, which is great for your peace of mind, I would wanna have the auditor, the finance manager, myself, and then whoever you designated to get together.
Okay, cause I wasn't thinking a full, all the way neck-deep audit, I'm talking about a sampling of two or, two or three items to, to.
And I think we're positioned for that soon now because of our new auditors being on board for the last few months and they've gone through that initial few months of digging through everything. And, uh, to date, we're very, are very comfortable with what they have discovered.
Can I piggyback on the new auditor thing?
Sure.
So there is the ruling about having a new auditor every so years, is that true?
It's good, it's practice, it's not a rule.
Right, okay, it's just good, and so we are following that as well.
Two or three years.
Since we have a new one.
The last one we've had a long time, right.
Yeah, so we got a new one, okay.
And we've got a new set of eyes, so that would help open up potential, so I think that would take care of a lot of these pieces as they go through.
I, I, oh, I just wanted to touch one thing that we're gonna talk about a little bit more later. And I don't wanna get into it deeply, but it might assist us in this. In our board goals, it talks about board member education. And with things like audits, um, with things like, you know, how we're running meetings, just different things. There are some educational things that perhaps would help us throughout the year. And I understand in our, in our board retreat, whoever wrote it, and maybe that was the gist of the whole board, I don't know. It talks about having access to educational, external educational opportunities. But my thought process is at times when we do things like review the audit, you know, the audit is presented to the board April, May-ish, sometime in there, it's probably not a bad idea to have the finance manager with the superintendent, perhaps even bring the auditor in, it's worth a few extra dollars, give the board a twenty-minute snapshot of saying, this is what you are looking for, this is what an audit consists of. It's great for us to sit here and say, well, let's go and investigate and try to find some information. But the question is, without that type of training, and I don't think it has to be really involved, but without that type of training with, I think, a small board, it's easy for everybody, are we even asking the right questions? Are we looking in the right areas to monitor? Where would you look? What, what do you wanna see? What do you, you know what I mean? As a board member, I'm not sure how comfortable I am with that, without somebody saying, you know, these are, this is where you look, you look in the management letter for material weaknesses or you look at, you know, your accounts receivable, whatever. That type of information, I think through education can help us where we can at least ask the right questions.
Yep.
That's my thought.
We are pro-education.
We are.
We have to be at this point.
I think we have to be.
Absolutely, it's huge, it's really huge.
And just the last caveat, and then I'll be quiet, but in this section fourteen, because state law is, well, it's set, but it's still in flux and things are still moving when it comes to tuition and all of this, I see this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, when I interpretate, or interpret other sections of policy governance, when this changes, you're gonna wanna inform the board and say, yoo-hoo, there's been a change, this part of your policy needs to change. That's his responsibility, which is great, cause we don't have to follow.
And also though, the next, the next meeting, it will be incumbent upon us to review that policy, its, its conditions and make sure that we know what we wanna put in.
Yeah, a minor example of that was the succession policy that we had, we needed to modify, and it, it was a minor modification, but.
Yep.
It's my job to identify those changes that need to happen, bring them to your attention.
Great.
How often do we? How often do we visit the finance policy?
This one, right now, would be, the way we've been going, we do, we've done four a year without the ends. And that, that gets us through all of policy two-dos in, over the course of two years, four a year.
Two years, okay.
We can, but we have the ability to do it when we so choose.
Right, okay.
So we can do it should we need to, if there's a reason we think we have to. We can, we can bring it back on the table.
Education aside, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we accept the superintendent's interpretation and we accept his evidence for these policies.
I think we had this as discussion only.
Is it discussion only?
Discussion only for tonight. So I think, based on the, the previous discussion, we may wanna have a discussion and possible action, so we can close it in the same.
Okay, okay, so we are gonna bring this back on the consent agenda then, okay.
And the only thing that I would.
I withdraw my motion.
That I would add in number fourteen after, after I wrote this, was the last part of, right under fourteen, students exercising board-approved school choice programs. So the assumption is you're talking about Act one fifty there, which is high school choice, okay, that is one. The other procedural piece that we have in place is we allow staff members that don't live in Winuski to bring their children to the school. Okay, so.
And they do not pay tuition?
No.
Okay.
And so, board-approved school choice programs, there's a little interpretation there. I would like to polish that up for when you see it next month, to include some more specific language around, because it's, it's, I wouldn't necessarily call it a choice program, so I'll find some different language to describe it, but I think it's important to include it because it is a, a nice benefit that the board does provide to some staff members.
Well, you know, that reminds me of something you said, Mike, about you would be very pleased as, to use as a metric whether or not teachers take advantage of that and, and at what sort of rates. I'd be interested to know and to start to track that and, and check that out every year to see if it's going.
One of my measures of success in the district is our teachers wanna bring their kids to get them educated here.
Yeah.
That, to me, would be a huge statement, because anywhere you work, if you've got that kind of confidence to actually educate your own kid, that tells me you're in the right spot, so, yeah. Okay, so that would be the adjustment and the interpretation to that, add that particular piece.
Yeah, and there aren't any other significant adjustments that I would bring to your attention right now.
This is great evidence of why we have to teach kids how to flip the question, right? Kitchen readers, it's not just irrelevant practice. It was good, good writing.
Okay, and then, so we'll make that adjustment in the agenda for next time, and we'll put the potential for having possible action and, and accepting on the spot, so.
That's great.
And I think that'll be easier as we go through, get through the last three, as we go through this year, that'll be the first pass for all. We've at least set a precedent at that point. All right, so then, moving along, we've put the budget timetable in here. Just wanna keep that up in the forefront here because that is basically our, the biggest work item we've got between now and January, is we put a whole package of things timed together. So for those watching, just getting things started December one, with a very baseline distribution, December three is going through the, any significant increases and decreases in the specific areas. December ten, question and answer period, that is at a regular board meeting. Seventeenth, preliminary review of the revenues, and as we've, as I've found for the last four years, you never know what that really is gonna be until you get into beyond the vote. So I think our primary focus as we move through, though we have to know all those numbers, is on cost. That, that really becomes the, the focus. And then, presentation of any potential, beyond that, and then adopting in January fourteenth. So I'd like to throw a word out while I'm here, that we will be looking and soliciting for help in, from the community. And I'm gonna challenge the board this year, I think we went through last year and we called it a budget buddy, but that at least guarantees we've got five other people than us in the room. So I would really love to see the discussion happen in December and not in the first week of March, before that first Tuesday. At that point in time, I would love to have the discussion be, we understand this thing and it's not a flame.
Right, and so for those who are really interested in what we are doing with the budgets on Front Porch Forum and coming to those other forums, this would be a great time for them, you know, for y'all to join us.
Please come and join.
Yeah.
And then at the bottom of the budget piece, the rest of the timeline right out through the vote on March third. So the only other piece I had in there is any discussion on parameters or thoughts. And, I mean, last year, we went through, I would say, a pretty significant structural adjustment to enable to, us to be able to measure progress year-to-year. Something that baffled me that we can't do because of a data system. Broke finally, before we broke Robin, the ELL special ed down to give the ELL and the special ed a separate piece, are both significant pieces of workload, so I think that was a key component that we did last year. We've got contracts in place for everybody, so salaries are not a mystery this year. That can be right up front, no, no guessing, no estimates. So I think we've got a lot of good, solid foundational work behind us, and so.
The only thing I'd add in, in A, December first, so last year, the baseline budget was given to you November eighteenth. And what I heard and some of the, the feedback from the, from the budget cycle last year was, we wanna kinda get there quicker. So in order to do that, I, that's why I pushed it out to December first, because then we'll be able to do more of our sharpening of the pencil, so to speak, before that baseline comes to you.
Okay.
Okay, and, and tell me if you, if you feel differently, if you wanna see it earlier. But that's what we kinda felt like, you know, when we came back with different versions each time, and there was some shifting that happened, and it seemed like the board would rather have that, a lot of that work done before, before it first comes to you. It'll still change to some degree, because things shift, that's how, that's how it goes, but not as much.
You'll all thank me in the end.
Learn not to argue with that point, for sure. The only thing I'd like to try to request, and I don't know where we shoehorn it in here, but somewhere after we get done with the base process, is to spend forty-five minutes, we had a, more than likely, in a regular board meeting, having a discussion about what went well, what can we have done better? Just so that we can then sharpen it again for next year and have a better, potentially streamlined view of what we're doing, so. Wherever we can find that, whether it's in the regular February meeting after we've put everything together, after the March meeting, when we hopefully have a past budget and can look back on the process, rather than potentially having to put another one together. So if we can figure out where to shoehorn that in, I would like.
Great, and I just had a thought, too, about the budget process and knowing how engaged our community is around, once it's time to vote, is I, it'd be interesting to get their feedback on, how can we better engage you in the process along the way? Because we do open the doors, but it, it does seem, because everyone's lives are so busy, that it's not until the vote's happening that the true interest gets engaged. So I'm just wondering if, if we're always trying to hear from our community about our connections and how can we get more, you know, the two-way street happening, would it be prudent to, almost do a survey or some way of giving us feedback of how can we make this budget process more, you know?
Or do a discussion at the O'Brien Community Center or at the Senior Center instead of presenting a budget? Get input about the budget before it even gets to that point.
So that would be in the December, in the December timeframe, bring it out, bring it out rather than inviting people in.
After the first, when it comes out, like.
What if we held one of those four meetings at the O'Brien Center?
We've done it before and haven't had great success, but that was ten years ago, and the community has changed.
I mean, it's a whole nother shift, you know, between, especially in December, but, I mean, it's also December.
Present it the first time and then the second time for discussion, yeah, have it down there.
Have just one of, one of the four, so it's not always in this location.
Non-standard meetings, just budget, just budget.
Well, and I, and I think, you have to really think about what you wanna ask the owners to. What do you wanna ask them? Yeah, because it can be, it can be challenging situation if it's not structured in a way that people understand what, what your role as a board is, what their role as, as the ownership, as the citizens and the taxpayers is. And it can quickly become something that you didn't intend it to.
But I think also providing that information as well, so that the budget process is a bit more, like, what, what is the process that a school, this organization goes through to shape a budget?
So people understand that.
Right, because I, I think that is important education, that sometimes you don't get until you're actually sitting here. You know, and so we don't readily pass out that information. It's not intuitive. You know, it's a governing process, so there is a little bit of, you know, simple education along the way of, so how, how does this thing get shaped? You know, so it could be a little preview of that.
If I had to look down through the budget presentations, I would think the one that we would want to do is the one that starts with the mission and vision, that says, this is the goal of this district, and these are the increases and decreases in these different areas as to where we believe we're gonna be.
I'll change that to ends, by the way.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, ends.
Forgot to update that.
Yeah.
And that whole orchestration of what policy governance is, which helps us all define our roles, owners as well. So they understand their own role in this whole process.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I take your point, Sean, because I think it's hard to invite people to talk about a budget when we're not asking them to say, do you want more arts? Do you want more music? Do you want more math? Do you want more sports? I mean, that, that's not really what we're asking when we get down there, so. And I can see if I were invited to a topic like that, I would wanna be invited to a discussion about priorities and, you know, where I would put my money if I were on the board or kinda thing. So I take your point about being careful with the questions that we're gonna be asking folks.
But, but is, is, is the first meeting, that is a discussion of the ends and the priorities and the current view of the significant increases and decreases in special ed, ELL, operations, and IT, that, to me, would set a stage that if we can get a group out that sets that on the table, that says, these are the parameters in the budget.
Right, right.
We need, we, we would like to have input from the community as we move forward in these other meetings to go through these. That would be the, setting the table for the invitation to bring people in. Maybe get a discussion started about whatever, and then potentially get folks in here to help.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than, you know, the, the debate about, do we spend an extra eight dollars in art and take it out of, at that point in time? That's gotta come at some point.
I think the other thing to consider is the timing of it. So if you have a ground swell of support for something in December, that costs four hundred thousand dollars, you know, how, how does the board respond to something like that? Opposed to if you, if you're, if you're doing that, let's say, the spring, sorry, you know, well ahead of time and you're playing, you're getting the input from the owners and, and there's, you hear a theme emerging. You, you and I have a lot more time to plan for that. It can be, that, that, that's what the point I was trying to make is, it can become very challenging quickly when all of a sudden, you know, and it may not even represent the whole community, but who showed up.
Yeah, right, right.
And all of a sudden, you know, you guys are thinking, oh, my goodness, how are we gonna fit this into our budget? You know, because we had all these people who were very, very interested in doing this particular thing.
So I may be course-correct a little bit, because what I was saying about asking input wasn't about, so what do you wanna spend money on? Because I think it's more about educating about the process and being engaged in the process that, once you realize and you're involved in it, you have about this much space to truly make decisions. So it wasn't about decision-making, more of just involving the community in the education of the process of how the decisions are made based on what the ends are and what the, you know, the goals are, are of the organization. So that's kind of what I was thinking about in terms of having more community engagement because we certainly don't come to these budgets and go, hmm, I wonder what can spend the money on? I think I'd really, you know, like, there's not a lot of space for that.
Right.
And I, I don't know if that's really well-known about how educational budgets are shaped. But what is known about education budgets is, they're really big. So I know, that was just a major conversation over last year, was, what is this about education, you know, the budget? So it's more about the education of the process and getting involved and understanding it versus looking for ways to spend money.
Yeah.
I don't know if that clarified, but that's kinda what I was, that was the road I was going down.
Totally.
All right, so we'll have, we'll, we'll have to continue that and, and see if we can find something that makes sense. I would, I know Brian's gonna be here. I know Jim Reed will probably be here.
Hope so.
I don't know if Brian will be here.
Other than that.
That's right, he's on the council now.
He's on the council now.
That's right.
We definitely need him back.
I was gonna say, we're gonna need a budget buddy then, okay.
Oh, he'll be my buddy.
Yep.
I don't know, I don't wanna, I don't know what your protocol is.
Nope, nope, go ahead, interject, please.
I would only say as a parent, the, the issue of the ends is extremely helpful because what I've found as a parent often happens if I don't make board meetings, which I can't make all of them, is suddenly there's a budgetary problem and decisions have been made about what's being cut, but I don't understand how it fits to the goals that the school board and the school has. And as a parent, if I knew, all right, these are the things the board's already agreed to as ends, and if we're trying to get here, then that means these things may have to be cut for me, for us to get here, then, okay, it makes sense. Versus, I get this list of, laundry list of things that are gonna be taken off, and I don't know, well, isn't that gonna impact, impact this instead of this? So it, it makes it more logical, at least as a parent, when I know what the ends are. Even if I don't agree with them, at least it, it makes sense that, that we've, we've agreed to this and they're doing this. And I may not like that we agreed to it, but that's a different argument than it makes sense that that's where the cuts are being made or extra funding is being given.
So that's a, another comment for the education on the process rather than tinkering inside the process itself. Or tinkering with the numbers inside the process.
Well, I mean, I think you'll still get, I'm sure you'll still get pushback, but at least, at least you were clear about why you're doing it, and that's, that's a better discussion I can have as a, as a parent of somebody in the school who's gonna be affected by that.
Good, that's a much appreciated perspective. All right, anything else? Appreciate that discussion. On to our student report.
I'll try to make this fast. So last Friday, September fifth, these three speakers from Amnesty International came and spoke in front of the entire high school.
Nice.
One of the speakers, the main speaker, he was from Nigeria, and he told us about his experience in Nigeria as he protested against the government and was arrested and tortured just for protesting, which it was a peaceful protest. And their main message was for all the young students to get involved with and stay involved with all the current events like Ferguson.
And as for, uh, T, sports and athletics, we have our two soccer teams and our football team, of course. And, uh, right now, the girls' soccer team is one oh and wins, and there's also a soccer game going on right now in the backfield under the lights, I believe. Boys' soccer team is two one and wins, and our football team is one one.
Okay, uh, last Friday, the votes for homecoming king and queen started. So you can vote, you can vote during lunch, it'll be fun. The winners will be announced, uh, this Thursday, tomorrow, tomorrow, yes, tomorrow. Around five, right before the parade that happens at six. And also today, around eleven thirty-five, there was a pep rally, and it was very, very loud.
Very spirited, huh?
Yes, very spirited. Mr. Webb, Matt Webb, and, uh, Mr. Lit hosted it, so very loud.
And also, over the summer, we had four students from the high school and six students from Burlington High School involved in a community event that occurred over the summer in August twenty-first, August twenty-third at Babson College in Wellesley, Massachusetts. Uh, this event was called the Youth Leadership Institute, or YLI. This is the second annual conference. Sites and students from all over New England came to this one conference to discuss the things about student-centered learning, also what kind of actions they're taking in their schools, and just trying to improve their school structure and curriculums. And, um, also, a lot of ideas were passed to each other and many positive thoughts about. And, um, also, a lot of ideas were passed, uh, to each other and many positive thoughts about the future of our schools and student-centered learning were passed around, and it was extremely successful. I was also part of the youth planning team for Youth Leadership Institute, and, um, I'm just saying, really proud of it.
Good.
Yeah, this thirty, Thursday, the Peace Jam had their first meeting. It was more about informational stuff, but, um, they're trying to gain, uh, grab new members into the group, more specifically male members, since they only have one ma- male member in their team, so they wanna try and diversify their group a little more. And, uh, they're, they'll be working on the, albeit abuse in the community, so.
Yes, indeed. Are you part of that group, Lidda?
Uh, I'm thinking about it.
Yeah.
I think I may.
I know. Rainbow, are you part of that group?
Uh, I already have a lot of stuff going on, so I may or may not.
Okay, fair enough.
And, um, uh, our final report is that, um, something fun that happened, uh, was during our high school town meetings, when the whole high school comes together in our auditorium. Uh, our faculty has been doing it as well, but the, um, there was a surprise at our last town meeting 'cause something new we're trying to put in this year is put something special or a surprise in every town meeting. Uh, Mr. Matt Webb surprised the entire high school with the viral challenge called the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge.
Mm-hmm.
He was actually challenged by Superintendent, uh, Mr. McMahon in here, and he accepted the challenge. He, uh, ended up challenging three other people. I believe it was two faculty members and one student. And then two students were randomly chosen to pour the bucket of ice water over his head. It was extremely funny. It left the whole school in uproar.
It was mostly ice, so he can cheat a little bit.
Thank goodness we have those baby pools in the, uh, in the elementary.
Yes, uh-huh.
All right, I was thinking about that. Logistics.
Very good.
The only thing that I would add, because it's challenging, because these young women are so busy and so involved, and we're working on how they gather information across the whole organization, because they spend most of their life in the high school.
Mm.
Um, but just to add on to what you said about athletics, that, of course, we have middle school soccer program, uh, that are, that's in full swing. And, uh, we partnered with the city, um, to run a Saturday morning, um, soccer program out of Landry Park. Got a Vista volunteer there spearheading, um, for K through five kids.
Great. All right, moving on to five B. Uh, two, um, of the required policies under review, harassment of employees four one one six and alcohol and drug-free workplace forty-three ten. Uh, you'll notice that in both of these cases, as I think we've had in the last couple also, we have, um, the current policy in place and then the V S B A, um, done draft. The V S B A does a draft of the required policies as an option, and so that's why there's been two of them.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll, um, now, these are just raw, right? These have not had any, that I had seen, they had not had any adjustments. Is that no real need for what's in here, or?
Um, I mean, it's for board discussion. I have, I went through and I have some recommendations to you about, um, both how we could kind of meld some of these pieces, but then ultimately which one to mostly go with.
Okay.
And so I guess I would start with saying I would, I would go, I would recommend that you go with the model, V S B A model policy. It's simpler, it's to the point, it has all of the required, um, citations and legal references in it. Um, but I do like some of the la- the policy language in the first couple of paragraphs in our existing policy that I would recommend kind of melding into the policy, uh, statement in the model of part A. So for example, in our current policy, about four lines down, we believe that harassment of any kind disrupts the educational environment, infringe upon human rights and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I, I prefer that, adding that in, because in the model policy, it goes straight to harassment is a form of unlawful discrimination. And I think tying it to the educational process right off this, uh, and the policy statement in the first sentence is important.
Yeah. Not to mention our global connection in the end statement and the human rights is a nice pairing.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the model in general, you know, i- i- it's clear, concise, gets to the point, but it could use a little massaging, particularly in that policy, uh, in section A.
Yeah.
And then the other piece that I wanna make sure we've, and I've got a call into V S B A around this, is that the protected categories have changed.
Mm.
Um, and, and we wanna make sure that we have all of those, um, in, in your policy. And, um, so I was looking on, uh, on a federal site with those, and I think because the model policy has not been updated since April of twenty twelve, that we would just need to, um, make sure we have everything included in, um, section C where it lists the eight different types. Cause there's some different ones, genetic information, uh, equal pay and compensation, or a few that are, are not out front in the, in the model.
So, I, I, I do like the, the, starting with something other than the hammer at the top of the policy.
Yeah.
Some header on the top. Um, the local one that we had has what looks like a very in-depth procedure, which can strike both ways. Um, and procedures are your, your piece, that, you know, the policy itself is what we own, so I don't know if you wanna keep those together. But the, the one point I wanted to make is, is on page two here, and I don't know how.
Of the model.
Of, of the model.
Yeah.
Um, the, the top few have, uh, hit on examples. Uh, the first one, sexual harassment, may include, blah, blah, blah. May include. Uh, but then you get to creed and religion harassment includes.
Right.
The first two with may include say, these are some possible.
Yeah.
But you can have other things that come in here. But when you go with includes, which I think most of the rest of them from there down have, they do, three through eight all have include.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't leave you any flexibility for something that skates right on the margin of one of these.
Right.
So I'm wondering if we wanna just put may include that list, and that opens it up to a little broader interpretation if something is skating right on the edge.
Yep.
I think that is a great point, Mike.
Then, anything, anybody have anything else on that? I had, um, the procedures were weak, um, and ours had them. So the one thing that I didn't, I don't know how much you had wanted to include, but I didn't want to. I thought an interesting difference between the two was, um, in our current policy, it had, um, harassment means, uh, let's see. Catch that. Something about must first be offensive to the recipient. And I didn't care for that statement, because it, the first time, it may not seem like it, it becomes a problem the second time, so. I, I just would venture some caution in the intro to that, that, that statement didn't seem, didn't seem right, so. I, I guess I would, I thought the, trying to stay with the standards are a little more terse and to the point. Any thoughts there? Which, so here, this is discussion when we come back for a second and a final approval reading. Do we want the, the, uh, the sample, the V S B A?
With the.
With the header.
Yeah.
Attached to it and the broader descriptions.
The maze, yeah.
The only other thing I had in here is an example we're gonna end twice, semantics, but it looks bad when you publish it.
Yep. Got it.
All right. Anything else on employee harassment? The next one is alcohol and drug-free workplace. I assumed this was, when I read our current policy, it didn't seem to me that it was really intended for non-employees, non-paid employees, uh. But I, I, after, I got a little deeper, it's volunteers or student, uh, intern, student teacher intern too, so. And I made that distinction in the state one. I like the fact that the state laid out what the definitions of those particular.
Yep.
Pieces were, so.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend, I mean, this, this is one of those ones that comes straight from federal lingo.
Right.
Um, so I think going with the model policy, and they're already pretty darn close to each other.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think there's any substantive differences. Um, the one thing that I wa- I wanna align the, the language and the definitions to fit our other policies on, um, whether we call them work-study, whether we call them interns, whether we call them student teachers. I wanna align that language and, and, but also make sure that it covers anyone who comes into this bill.
Right, you've got volunteer in here, so that, you know, unpaid, not employed by the district, works on occasional, regular basis, so.
So I would just align that language with our other policies.
Okay, okay.
All right.
That's good.
Any reason we wouldn't go with the model?
Oh, there it is.
Yes, someone's gonna say that, you.
All right. Any other discussion on the policies?
I just have a, it's a very minor semantic point on the alcohol and drug-free workplace, which is the very opening line of the second one, no employee, volunteer, work-study, student. I'm talking about the model, which is the same as ours in this case. Will unlawfully manufacture, distribute, dispense, possess or use alcohol or any drug in the workplace? Uh, it, it feels like unlawfully is the modifier there for all of those things, uh, and so, uh, the unlawful use of alcohol is what? I mean, um, or, or does that just mean, is unlawfully the modifier for manufacture, distribute, dispense, possess? And use alcohol is like a, a new modifier. Outstanding, yeah. He's right.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, like? Very good. Cause in a sense, somebody could be very legally using alcohol, and, you know, any of us could be drinking something, it'd be perfectly legal at this very moment, but I'm not sure it would be in there.
Yes, and you would be astounded to find out, you know, for someone to, it, it's not necessarily against the law.
To use alcohol. Right, no, it's not, of course, right, that's right.
Right.
But so.
It could be against our local policy or even city ordinance, but, but anything beyond that.
Right, right, so I guess what I'm saying is, does this, does this.
We need that unlawful.
You think if you just strike unlawfully, I think it still reads, well, it reads like what you'd want it.
Right, exactly.
That's a good catch.
That's in both of them, yep.
That was exciting.
No, but you, you, you know, you make, you make that comment now, but when you're, when you're sitting here some night and you've got someone at the table and you've got some kind of a grievance or something going on.
Yeah.
It can make the difference between being able to use the policy and saying, we gotta go back and redo it.
Play on words can become very important.
Yes, well, yes, not a play on words. It can, it can be significant impact, different impact based on the individual, so. That, that's why I really wanna make sure we do spend, do the due diligence to look through and understand what, what we think we've got. Hopefully, five sets of eyes, nine good ones will help us.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yep. And I, I'm just another detail, I don't know if we need to write like non-prescription drug or legally prescribed drug versus other drugs. I don't know.
A little, you know, you got a blood pressure medication, does that count?
Yeah, right.
Right, so there's, I'm not sure how you, you know, work around that one.
I don't wanna question the feds here, but I just wanna.
Oh, yeah, cause I think in the, in the model, it has a reference, right, uh.
Drug means.
It, it cites the, um, controlled substances listed in federal law.
Right, 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 right.
So I think that's a broader.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great. All right, enough of that, sorry.
That's all right. Okay, um, so, uh, next item here then is, um, uh, discussion impossible action on board goals. What I wanted to put in here and I tried to capture in the piece that, uh, we attached at the end of the governance processes down at the bottom. This was what I had captured as the goals that we came out of our August retreat with. Uh, I, with one exception, and that is the bottom one, which is board education. I know Tori had mentioned, we're gonna have something with board education, but that didn't come up in the retreat, so I added it to the bottom, so.
Oh, you did. I thought you said so.
For, for straight up.
Yep.
You know.
Thank you.
Open, openness. I wanna make sure that that was not something. So I like to go down through them, and then what I really would like to do is, when we get to the end of the year, we're gonna wanna look through this list and say, yes, we made either an impact on these, or we didn't, because we couldn't, didn't want to, but for these reasons. But I don't wanna get to the end of June and say, yep, the goals were nice, I can't wait to develop another set.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we don't do something with these, we, I think we've wasted our year.
Mm-hmm.
So without getting into details first, the, the goals that I had come up with from, from that discussion that we had, um, continuing a community outreach. Um, and then I put a few questions in here to generate some, some discussion, but I don't wanna dwell on, on much further, deeper detail yet. Um, I would love this one to be done, close out the community discussions on the remaining ends items. We had invited a college readiness discussion in here. We had five different area schools or six come in and had a great discussion. I would like to say, be able to look back at the end of the year and say, we had a college, a career-ready discussion. And I've got a list of probably eight or ten names already. Julian, I know you gave me one and I had somebody else, uh, come up. Local and global engagement and wellness. I'd like to have community discussions or local engagement on discussions of what does that mean by the end of the year. Receive first-pass feedback on two of the ends interpreted.
Can I ask a question about number two? So in the annual agenda plan for career readiness, we have tentatively scheduled November twelfth.
Right.
Which is a board meeting for, for that, uh, forum. And then tentatively scheduled at the February meeting, February eleventh, for the local global engagement. Wellness, I wasn't sure what we were looking at for that one, cause I don't know that we, if, if, are we looking for the, uh, the community forum on that? Cause a couple of wellness pieces we had, that you have going in the annual agenda plan, our, our wellness coordinator will be coming in the spring. I think it's March to the Focus on Learning to kinda talk about what she's been doing. And then you also have the, the wellness policy on the agenda in May, um, for review and.
The wellness, and the interpretation of wellness out of the ends in May?
No, no, the wellness po- the board's policy on wellness and child nutrition is up for review.
The required, the required policies, okay.
What would kinda be cool, cause what we're, I, I think what we're also looking for is interpretation of community, a- as well as our owners, you know, like engaging our community and sort of defining, so what does it mean to lead a healthy, productive and successful life, right? That's what we're trying to get down to.
Right.
So it'd be kinda cool to have a community forum on that prior to reading through the policy and hearing what's going on in a way.
Right.
Of somehow being able to funnel that into what the feedback that we get.
Yep. So if you ha- if we had J C come in March to the Focus on Learning, you're gonna get some information about what's going on in the school and the work. And then if, uh, the forum was in April, then you have the policy in May.
I think that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. So ultimately, with all three of these, what we really need to get out of it is, we need to ha- we collectively, Sean, the, the leadership team, ultimately, the staff and the board, that the, Sean and the leadership team need to come out with a what does that mean for this wellness piece of it. We've got it in the ends. What do I interpret that to be? When Sean comes back to us and says, this is my interpretation of what you mean by the wellness piece in the ends policy, we've gotta have some kind of a basis to say, what do we think that means? And does the interpretation align?
So we need to hear from the community.
We need to, we need to collectively hear something about what is this wellness piece of the end statement.
Right.
And then we may have very different interpretations of what it is. And if we do, we need to flush that out.
Mm-hmm.
And then get down to a point of, cause when Sean writes an interpretation of, we're gonna deliver this thing and this is what I interpret this to mean, ultimately, we've gotta be in agreement as we move forward. We've gotta accept that, so. That, I think, is a key piece. So receiving, um, a first-pass feedback on two of the ends interpretations, and I think we had listed the, uh, career readiness and the, uh, college readiness, getting an interpretive response from you on one of those. I think we put the college-ready interpretation in late.
The college readiness is in the agenda plan for January. The career readiness isn't in the, in the mix yet.
Okay. Um, the next item, we, it was. Uh, the next item, we, it was loosely termed retention, and that is, uh, students and families, how do we keep folks in the school system all the way up from K through twelve, uh, and in a community, and that was part of working with a communication strategy, so with some help from the partnership. Partner, the fifth was partner with parent groups to develop a higher level of community interest in working with each group. So that was trying to get a little deeper into the community as well, and then board education was six. So what I'd like to do is see if we can generate, uh, a name against these, and whether we need community involvement to put a, to put together a board committee to go out and look at this, that's one thing, but we've got to get started early. If we're gonna make any impact on these as we go through the year. Anything we missed, or anything that's missed?
I just had one thing, and I, and I, this rolled around in my mind a little bit after I left and was thinking about different things we discussed, um, under number one, the third one, it says invite liaisons to several board meetings to discuss issues from each new American community. I guess, I, I'm having an issue with targeting specific groups with the thought of, you're gonna leave other groups out, and, and we're a school board for the entire community? I would be more comfortable if we invited, you know, a diverse group of liaisons, and maybe not just said the five percent of our community that are new Americans, that, you know, we specifically want to target you and nobody else, I don't think that's right.
Okay.
I would like to see that changed.
Yep, nope, we can certainly pull that up.
Both in language and in how we look at this, of saying, you know, maybe putting a little bit of thought process in and saying, you know, what are our challenges? And
Okay.
Doing a wide, try shotgun diversity, you know, a bunch of groups, rather than saying, okay, we're gonna look at five percent of our population, and we're gonna invite liaisons from them, I don't, it just doesn't strike me as, as right.
I think we had that, we sort of broadened that conversation in our retreat, where we were talking holistically, I think the language of new American might be there, but just really looking broadly at our community, making sure that we have voice from, from everyone. It's, you know, we're reaching out to all groups.
Yeah, I would just be comfortable with, you know, a diverse group of liaisons, rather than specifically saying, new Americans, or this group, or that group, I think that's not a great thing, I don't, personally.
Yes, I think if we strike it, we've captured it, though, developing a new method, or again, using a community dinner to gather info from the community, I think we've, we've, we've captured it already, so.
Yep.
Or the intent, anyway.
Yep.
So, what I'd like to do is, with that list, is look to see who will take which ones, and, I mean, if you need more board help, that's fine, um, but if we need community help, we've got to go out and reach out. And if we come back and say, we need this, or that, we need to figure out how we move forward, I think community outreach is huge. Closing our ends discussions is, is a big one. Receiving the feedback on, on the ends, I think we're gonna do that anyway, so from a board goal, I don't think we really need to have anybody on that, I think that's all of us. And, and getting that interpretation, that's actually Sean doing all the work, so, makes it easier, makes it easier from a board perspective. But the board education, the partner with the parent groups, um.
I would take, I, if you're looking for names, I would take board education.
That would be wonderful.
With, with the superintendent, cause he's our resource.
Yep, um, you know, by, by all means.
I think, I think the two of us that.
Yeah. Don't lose.
I've got some information already.
Don't, don't lose sight of the fact that you, we've got access to Val Gardner still, I mean, she is the one that, um, we invited to help us through here, Anne Odato, down at, uh, Orange South.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's a lot of.
V S B A and the network.
The V S B A's out there.
And then also looking at, um, across all of us, making sure that we kind of hit everything, someone's got expertise in, you know, strength base, like finding our strengths and kind of going with that too, so we have to know every, we don't all have to know everything, but we all can have our.
That strengths base was nice, because I understand that this discussion about having everybody pick up and volunteer for something may not be comfortable for some of us, so, I appreciate Jay you jumping right in and helping.
The only other thing with that is the, you know, the subset of saying each board member having access to an educational seminar. I don't know if you could really judge success by having access.
Sure.
That, that's, you know, that's kind of saying, yeah, it's, it's out there going, maybe, maybe that might be ho- have be interpreted a little bit differently.
So, everything in here is, is subject to change, without notice, uh, with just a little bit of notice.
You can let them come back.
The, the headers that I put under here were only for five, and I, I would hope, Jay, that what I can do at the end of this whole thing, for everybody, not just Jay, but, is to take the header, if you want to reword it, that's fine, but at the end of the year, what I would like to be able to have is five different documents here, we don't need one for three, so we've got five.
Yeah.
Um, that we can put together and say, this is the progress we made on this item this year.
Um, I'm certainly willing to do number five, like with the partner, help develop the, the parent groups, you know, of, we were, had talked about getting Daniel Baird involved, and, and really trying to create, really inclusive, welcoming, opening, parent groups, to keep building relationships amongst parents and community members, so that there's a mix of, um, you know, kind of stakeholders on, on all the different parent groups that we have.
In, in part of the interest of getting some feedback from that particular community to help the board make a decision, that's one piece, right, that's, that would be active, parent groups, right?
And you, do we do, do you want to do it together?
The parent groups?
Yeah, like whatever, mm, I got one.
Sure. Just tell me what to do.
Is it?
That's my part, I'm the doer.
The doer, okay.
Right, and, and Julian, you and I had talked about the retention and working with, uh,
Jane.
Jane, that's what I was.
Yep, very happy to be on that number.
Okay, um, cause I think that one is, is key to being able to communicate what it is we're doing here in a very effective manner, which is something we haven't done well in the past. Can, the closing out of the community discussions on the remaining ends items, that one is gonna take some work in chasing some folks down.
Yeah, that's true.
So, some of the resources for that would be right at the O'Brian Community Center. Right, for the community, to reach every group, is that the one you're talking about?
Oh, continued community outreach, the top one, yeah, I mean, that certainly would be a, a method to be able to get into that. Uh, what we want to get out of it will be a discussion that we'd have to put forward.
How are number one and number two different?
Yeah, it's a good point.
They almost seem remarkably similar.
Um, two is aimed specifically at our ends items, and having a discussion here with persons of those that, that have some, uh, I don't know if it's expertise, with the education, one, we had, you know, the college, uh, folks in. Career readiness, I thought, a couple of, um,
Businesses.
Some businesses, some, uh, temporary employment services, what are you looking for in people? Uh, I know Shaw's folks lined up, uh, the, so, backwind craft up here had someone that was interested in coming into. So to me, that is a very focused discussion, that is not necessarily a broad community, one was intended to be a much broader community, in how do you bring them in for a discussion, or an education session on the budget? Or something.
And like wellness, I think that that whole idea of bringing our community in to help us with that piece of it involves our community, because it really is like, how do we interpret that for our kids, you know, what are we looking for? But you're right, with the whole career and college ready, I don't know about local and global engagement, I guess there's groups out there too, but.
We shouldn't have to go far for that one, to get a good base.
Specific, uh, expertise in some areas, so the wellness might fit into number one. Cause I could see us doing a community dinner around that.
Okay, that, that actually.
Maybe a whole wellness day, there's different things you can go to. Could be fun.
But the career readiness is coming up soon, November.
Yeah, that's already on them.
So that one is one that we're gonna have to do some work now, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll take that one and try to round up folks, because I'm gonna have October off from work, so I'm gonna have a lot of time on my hands.
I think you should do all of them, then. So there we go, are we done here?
I'll take, I'll take the career readiness to start. I, I've already, quite honestly, I've already got a pretty decent list to start it, and I know Sean had a few extra names to help, so. Um, as a group then, to continue the community outreach discussions, I think we need, I think we need to talk sooner, rather than later, about a community dinner, and what would we want to do with it? What, what kind of outcome would we want to have, maybe the wellness is, maybe the wellness is the piece.
Can you put together the wellness thing that you guys do for teachers and faculty, put it together for the community?
Okay.
And then have a discussion, after we do Zumba?
I think.
After mindfulness.
I think that will cover it, and Jen, you're gonna work with Tori on the. Okay, so I think the expectation from here then is, as we move forward, think about when we, i- if you were to be absolutely perfect, where would we be in June with it? What would we need to get there? What are the steps to, to get there, and then, um, as we move forward, how do we incrementally show progress, and when we get to June, can look back and say, at the board retreat, we talked about these things, and this is what we did with them, I, I, if we hit our goals, if we hit, if we develop goals that work, then hopefully we're moving the whole thing forward, so.
How do we involve student voice in our goals? In terms of interpretation and, and looking at what they are, how, you know, what are their ideas about helping us move forward with them too? Cause they might have a completely different view of how we go about doing it, you know, or reaching out, or what's important about parent group and community involvement, and um, retention, you know, students and families staying here? Doesn't have to be an answered question, just want to, as I see these amazing humans that, you know, like, how do we engage, you know, the students in helping us do this? Think about it, or, you know.
I think initially, we've got to make a conscious effort to reach out, because we wouldn't otherwise.
Right, right.
We wouldn't otherwise do it.
Is this a student's turn?
So I think with each of the actions, and the board education, not a hundred percent sure, except maybe that's a board, you guys are part of the board, it's part of the education, so.
I like where you were going, I think where you were going is, let's, let's keep that as a question for each of the points that are on here, so that each of us can.
Right.
Address as we move forward with it.
How does student voice fit into what you do?
Well, for instance, the retention, uh, thing would be a broader group after you guys get organized with Jane, and inviting some students to be a part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, they'll be here at least, and you can invite some of your, your classmates to come to the forums, and be a part of that.
All right, good, thank you, that's, uh, I don't want to forget the most important piece of the reason why we're here. All right, anything else? And tonight, the on- the only other item that we had, other than recent community activities by the board, was, uh, item D under five, which we put under governance, investment, board governance, budget.
So, for board education, basically you have about five thousand dollars at your, at your disposal.
That's what's in the budget.
So that's what, you know, you and I can talk about, and come up with, uh, the options, and, um, you know, people can go from there, knowing that's what the budget is.
Okay.
Great.
And to go along with that, though, I would like to open it up to a review, I, I don't know where the five thousand came from, I think it got pulled out of somebody's pocket at one point, I don't know that we consumed it all.
It's been there, hasn't it? It's been budgeted for a long time.
But I guess my challenge, I guess the challenge I'd like to throw to you, Jay, is, does that make sense? Should it be ten, should it be two?
Should it be two, okay.
I, I don't, you know, wherever, I mean, we, but take a look. I don't, I don't know what that's gonna, what it's gonna cost.
And what have we spent in the past?
That, that's the piece that I don't know.
Well, it depends, like, you know, if we go, if, if one of us goes to the conference, or nobody goes to the conference, you might end up with, you know, a X amount of dollars, if, if five members of the board go to the conference, and they all go for two days, you're gonna, you know what I mean, so it's kind of hit or miss from year to year, as far as what's gonna happen. But we can project, I think, an idea of ballpark.
Yeah, yeah, cause I know we pay a, we pay a fee to the V S B A, to some, to some level, for the services they provide, so. Um, Walamana of V S B A, October first, Milton, discussion with, uh, that's down at the bottom, okay.
Why'd they move it to Milton?
I jumped. Space, I suspect.
I didn't hear why they made that move.
Since you're talking about professional development, there's a conference every year on urban education at Brown University. The conference itself is free, you'd have to cover transportation and lodging if you went, and it's presented by the me- the doctoral students in their urban education program, on their doctoral research.
Interesting.
And I've gone a couple years, it's, it's really interesting work, and it also, um, it's a relatively diverse group of students from all over the country that are at Brown, so it's an interesting connection, networking for other areas you might be interested in.
What time is it?
It's in the spring, I think it's in May, if you bug me, somebody sent an email, I can remember to send you the information, or you can go on the Brown Urban, just go on the website for Brown University and Urban Education.
That's great.
Their last year's conference.
Good, so that would, that would fit nicely into, you know, the board education piece and the budget too, just to be able to tie it all back together.
Yeah.
Recent commu- six, uh, A, we did early, six B, uh, recent, uh, community activities, um, Julian, your opiate piece, if you want to.
Sorry, I couldn't make it to that.
It's all right.
The night that school started, how was that?
It was intense.
Was it good?
Yeah, no, it was great, actually, we had a lot of, a lot of people there, um, and the, you know, the, the focus is really to try to sort of get a common understanding of the dynamics of prevention, addiction, treatment, trafficking, crime, policing, how it all, uh, links together, and then what we can do about it, if anything, as a community. Uh, and the idea being that before we rush out and do stuff, that we, that we figure some stuff out, and make sure we're operating on common assumptions that don't fall prey to, uh, maybe some of the common myths that emerge about opiate use and cycles of abuse within opiate stuff, so. Um, la- we had some great community members there, and we had some really great representation from different organizations, uh, around, uh, the community and the state, I mean, uh, Sean was there, the Peace Jam folks were there, uh, people from, uh, the state health department were there, there was people from treatment centers, there were, uh, recovering addicts there, there were, you know, just people from Fletcher Allen, it was just a really great bunch of people. Uh, and basically, we, we, we set ourselves a bunch of tasks to figure out, uh, different questions about what other communities are doing, that seem to be working, uh, Rutland, Burlington, and Bennington. Um, and then, uh, you know, what, what people are seeing in, in different places, we have a specific list of questions, and um, we have to, we have to set our next meeting date, but I, I think it's, it's pretty exciting stuff, really, it, it feels really grassrootsy and really interesting, and people are engaged, and, uh, and, you know, the school has a, a good, strong representation, and that Sean was there, and J.C., the wellness coordinator, was there, and, um, and of course, I was there, not in representation of the board, but I happened to be there. Uh, and, uh, you know, the first time Mike was there, which was great, so, and Tori was there too. So, you know, it's, I, I think it's gonna be a, an important conversation moving forward, the police department was there, of course. Yeah, it's a good conversation, I don't know, what'd you think, Sean?
Yeah, I thought it was great, I, what I liked was, you know, groups, they always want to go do something, you know, cause it feels like, why am I doing this if I'm not like impacting some change immediately, and I thought you did a really nice job of, of, uh, kind of saying, this is a learning session. You know, we need to gather information, because if we go out, we may spin our wheels and not have any impact, so we need to really be thoughtful.
Right, right, slowing it down to get there faster is kind of the idea.
Yeah, actually, you were there last time too, right? My first opiate conversation we had.
Anybody else, any other outreach contact?
I came to the barbecue.
The barbecue, that was awesome, at the end, oh my gosh, just cause I wanted to make sure my kid is going to preschool, we're
being directed in the right way, so, it was good, it was fun.
Yeah, that seemed like a huge success, I wasn't able to make it, but.
Yeah, it felt more spread out this year, like there was just sort of all over the school.
It was really nice having outside, yeah.
Nice having, and you had like all those welcoming people at the front door on this side, you know, pass it through the middle to the cafeteria, out to the back, the tents were nice.
Sixty percent.
Yeah.
Table's really nice, yeah.
And I think the, the tables, the, the, kind of the big winners at the tables were, um, uh, Silvan and, and the Stern Center, who were able, I think we had over fifty families sign up for tutoring services.
Wow.
Great.
Wow.
And being able to access our S E S monies.
Man, that's killer.
So that's, you know, and that's in full, full steam ahead right now, and, you know, the, the tutors come right to the school and work with the kids after school, so.
Man, you know, that is such a great example of, of ways to link sort of informal and formal activities together, uh, more seamlessly, you know, that sort of bridge that gap between what we offer and what people can actually subscribe to, or people do actually subscribe. You know, that sort of bridge that gap between what we offer and what people can actually subscribe to, or people do actually subscribe to. That's great.
That's good stuff.
Well, and it makes me think that maybe at all of our community engagement stuff, you know, we can think about how to take advantage of, of or leveraging the sort of community presence with the kind of formal mechanisms that we want to get people involved in. You know, the community dinner and probably not the opiate conversation, but others.
Anything else? All right, upcoming dates, homecoming week, September 11th to the 13th is this weekend.
This is weekend? Wow. That's early.
It's early.
It is early, isn't it?
I'm glad it's early.
Yeah, me, well, yes and no. It's always a lot of work, but we get through it.
Cast your vote, cast your net out for help. PTO meeting on the 13th at six, one of the ones that I alluded to just a few minutes ago, the VSBA Regional Meeting, October 1st, 5:00 to 8:30 with a late dinner at Milton. This one's got Secretary Holbrook gonna be there. Holcomb, sorry. Holbrook Center came up earlier, okay, yes. But that is an opportunity for us to hear and/or interject into, you know, directly into the folks that. I think in your letter, you had a spot that had some information about her views on standardized testing, which kind of fit exactly into what I think where we're going. Standardized testing is nice. It's a data point, but you can never draw a straight line from one point. Well, you can, but the assumptions you have to put in are ridiculously high. But, you know, the, the, the view toward other metrics, which part of the communication package that we're trying to, you know, work with, with the retention, the data piece that we put in last year, the data coordinator, the.
All right, data manager.
Data manager. How do you put data in a place where you can actually pull it together later and use it, utilize it to understand where you are and where you're going?
Right, and measuring individuals' growth rather than.
Yeah, if you get a year's growth, does it matter if that person is on grade level or can you tell if you get a year plus a month, you're getting closer to where you should be, maybe? So those, all those questions are all a piece of the puzzle, so that, I think, it sounds like we've got a pretty good voice with her, at least from what I've heard so far, so.
Is anybody gonna report back from that? Who's going? Is anybody go, I'm going. Is anybody else going?
I'm registered to go to.
You're going to?
I'm gonna try to go.
October 1st?
Yeah, media, media short synopsis in the October meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good if you could.
It can be very brief, but I'd be interested, I think it's gonna be interesting, Sean, see what she has to say.
I will not be able to. I got a 21st birthday that night.
I was gonna say, you just said you had the whole month of October.
Starts that day.
No, but that goes, that goes back to the bottom item of upcoming meeting dates, October 8th. I will not be available. So we're gonna have to, I think Jay, you do it on the spot, on the fly.
We will on the fly, select a chairman, probe 10. Get ready, Julian. Get ready.
So I just wanted to throw that out there for some pre-planning and have fun, good luck, and I'll be watching. No, I won't. I don't have a TV, anyway. Anything, future agenda items, anything other than our standard agenda package?
Just to show it before, I think from, from that meeting on the 1st would be great here in October.
Any educational things we go to, we need to demonstrate our learning.
Yes.
Bring it back.
Public exhibition.
All right, anything else before we move to adjourn? I would accept a motion at this point then to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for enlightening discussion. Rainbow, welcome aboard. Ladilla, welcome back.